The council on matters relating to city business, whether or not such items are on the meeting agenda. You may sign up to speak on the second public comments roster prior to or during the meeting. When called, approach the microphone, state your name, home address, and city residence. Each speaker may address the council for three minutes. Speakers shall refrain from entering into dialogue with council members or city staff, and from making comments regarding the good name and character of any individual. The first person to sign up is Ms. Julia Kinnear.
Thank you. I'm Julia Kinnear. I live at One Police Street, South Hill Road, Madison. So I'm resident of Madison City. I represent here a Ukrainian community of Huntsville, Madison area. We have around several hundred Ukrainians here, families who are both US citizens and still Ukrainian citizens. And it's very hard time for our community. So we want to call on the city of Huntsville to show support to the people of Ukraine, and to stand in solidarity with local Ukrainians who condemn the war and aggression towards Ukraine. We would like to prepare a resolution and present to your council in one of the next meetings. So we are all shocked by this senseless war that still is going on, whereas peaceful civilians die every day. We want to draw attention to the situation in Ukraine and get as much help as possible. A lot of us, we feel that we don't do enough. We want to help as much as we can. I'm a US citizen, and so are a lot of my Ukrainian friends in Huntsville, but we have a lot of relatives in Ukraine who are in danger and immune. So we're constantly looking for ways to support Ukrainian people with food, medical supplies, and other necessary things. We gathered a list of legitimate nonprofit organizations that we share at our rallies. We held four rallies so far here in Big Spring Park, two of them, one at the courthouse and then one at Mid-City. We were glad that we had good support from both Ukrainian people and American people. People came and, you know, shared their concerns and prayed with us. So we're planning to, we're planning to continue doing rallies as long as the war is going on. We're planning to register a nonprofit organization, Ukrainians of North Alabama, so we could spread more information and get more donations and so we could send them to Ukraine and help. We printed QR codes and we wanted to ask if it's okay to put them like in a yard sign format, to put them in some public areas where people would, you know, know and see them and support. It will be something like this, but in a little bit bigger format, "Support Ukraine." It would be just a reference to the website where people can give some donations. We want to thank everyone who prays and supports and stands with Ukraine. We really need it. Thank you.
And thank you very much, Ms. Kinnear. I'm gonna take a little privilege here and say that I almost wore, I wanted to wear a yellow and blue tie to council meeting tonight. Turns out I don't own one. But I will have one by our next council meeting. Taking off the council hat, it's just Citizen John here. I am so into that, what you have described, and I think it's wonderful. And there are many organizations in Huntsville that are working to help Ukrainians escape where they are and relocate to America, and many of them, as many as possible anyway, here in Huntsville. So, thank you very much.
We're working with several organizations and we hope that when the US government go out, then issues from Ukraine come over, so we can do more for the Ukrainians in Huntsville.
Well, thank you very much. Please reach out to these council offices. I would love to connect with you and get knowledge of the future events that you are gonna have. Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Kinnear.
I had a chance to attend their rally they had two Sundays ago at Big Spring Park. It was one of those few days that we had beautiful weather. Very inspiring, the speakers that they had, the support that they had from many, really different elements of our community. And it's nice to see that Big Spring International Park really is an international park. And I hope that you can feel like this city is part of you.
Yes, thank you so much. And we have some of our volunteers from Huntsville already traveled to Ukraine, traveled to Romania to help with Ukrainian refugees. So we're helping as much as we can.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Edgert.
So if I could hear from Ms. Kinnear what those four legitimate nonprofit groups are that she recommends, and I would request that we give her the name of the planner that can explain the sign ordinance and why it would be very difficult to give you permission, as much as it's critical to put those signs up, because we do have an ordinance that has to be administered equally to all people. And then lastly, to make sure that she has the phone number of Global Ties, who has a connection to Senator Shelby's office for any kind of piece of help.
Yeah, if at all possible, would it be okay if you did that after the, we only have a few more.
Oh, yes. Yeah, okay. I'll make sure I get those names to you.
Thank you, Ms. Edgert. Mr. Kinnear.
What idea could we, since this is, I think there's a lot of community support, could we use the City Hall TV channel just to put up the appropriate information that people could use to guide that?
I will defer to the mayor, Colonel Hamilton.
I actually think that we should probably get a legal review up in consideration and then move forward after that. Well, I thank you for the information. We will make sure that you get information from our office and then we'll get a legal review from Trey, who sits behind me, on our ability, you know, to really help you from a professional capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Kinnear. Our next speaker is Ms. Jackie Reed.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a game address, 303 Jack Coleman Drive. City Huntsville right here. I've been here about as much as I have been at my house. Jack Coleman Drive in Huntsville. Still in Huntsville. I may be moving, but I'm still here now. I wanna thank y'all for my input. I want to thank Mr. John Hamilton for allowing me to talk to him today. I know he got a earful, but he wasn't mad at me and he wouldn't. He handled it well. Well, and I appreciate him talking to me. Because I have a lot of problems and I can't straighten them out. That's what y'all were paid to do, straighten it out. Mayor Valley, you were being Jeopardy, Jeopardy, telling them how good we are and how many more people we need and what's gonna happen. Is that what you're doing? See if you can get me on there with you. I'd like to be on there too, either before you do or after you do or when you do. It needs to be a double, double deal, that, that thing. Anyway. I wanna thank you for coming, more police officers. Not that we need them, but we do. We need a whole lot of them. The speeders, the traffic, the roads, and this city is ungodly and ridiculous and outrageous. Nobody seems to be talking to the state. Nobody seems to be working on this. But we're all helping get the developers in a place and set them up for fifty years. We're good at that. We're doing really good planning in this city. I don't like it. When I see that parking garage over there, I don't wanna get over there. I don't love it and be happy. I always love it. But it's, God wakes me up at five o'clock every morning. He does, telling me what's going on in here. He don't have to, I see it. But that parking garage was the biggest mistake that y'all ever made. That's the easiest parking garage you can get in and out of. You could drive around it and you could do a lot. Look over there. You're sitting in the middle of the street just like you did on Governor's Drive. That, whatever you built on Governor's Drive in front of the post office, golly, whoever come up with that, you got no common sense. And I'm not smart by any means. I'm not. But I want you to go over there and look at that, sitting in the middle of the street. You changed that easement. You changed the set back. You changed in the right ways. You're just giving them developers air for, golly, anything that they want. And I'm sorry to say, I'm sick of Huntsville and how you're developing it. And I pray to God that he helps you and me all. Because we got a problem in this city with the big development tearing down historical buildings and don't care about the public when they come down here and ask for help, like that Monticello people I heard the other night. Everybody was wondering where I was. Monticello's are begging for help. A lot of people are begging for help.
Ms. Reed.
Y'all don't deserve your raise if you don't change things and do a better job. I love you, kind of deeply, King.
And we love you too, Ms. Reed. On the Jeopardy thing, it was a question that, about the city of Huntsville being the largest city. It was not in appearance by our mayor. Mr. Harold Kemp, you are up next, sir.
Well, my address is thirty-nine hundred Tolda Drive. I guess you could call that a perfect title. I had no idea that I would be able to come in and be able to come to speak since it's at the end of the year. But if you wanna talk about District Four, Bill Kling, you're doing an amazing job. Once again, I can say, you know, I, you know, I can't really call you a politician. You know, you're just like a family member in a sort of way. And, you know, I think you made our district one of the best districts. Can't, you know, I heard Devin here one meeting talking about how the north side was the best district. When it comes to it, it's the west side, the southwest side. Because, you know, you can count Bill to least, you know, no shade until you answer your phone call. Take it back and touch with you, you know what I mean? He will put in the work. And I'm proud that you're my district councilman. Right now, it seems like District Four is up for sale, meaning that it's an election. And, you know, I really want you to stay there. If I was somebody important, I would say I endorse you, Bill Kling. So we really gotta get to work, man. Because Mark is a tough opponent. You know, I've had breakfast with Mark. You know, he's really favorite, you know? He calls the mayor Tommy. I'm like, I'm like, Mayor Tommy, man, I wanna be friends with you like that where I can call you Tommy. And speaking of you, Mayor.
Mr. President, I have quite, I would like to find out if it's within our bylaws to talk about political situations instead of city business? Or, I mean, there's not a concern, there's just endorsements?
Do we, do we pause that time as well?
Right. Riley, can you weigh in on this, please?
If I may, as a colleague and I understand maybe the discomfort, there has been examples in this room of support for myself and other individuals. And I do understand the discomfort. We cannot sway or judge a perspective of somebody's affirmation.
Sure.
And I think that if we do go down that road, we will have some perspective of deciding who is affirming somebody too much and who is not doing enough. Now, again, I understand the perspective of concern you're displaying now. But I'm just, that's, we've had this conversation before from the days around the election season. And if somebody takes their three minutes to talk about the success of their city council member or their frustrations, I think both are weighed equally.
Okay, okay.
That's just my two cents of similar.
So I, I thought that we were supposed to keep all discussion related to praises for the area or concerns about the area, but not about a particular person who happens to be running?
I think that's from our view. I think that's from our seat. But again, having this experience happen three years ago of frustrations and things that were said about me, I think an individual has and they're right to come and display their affection, adoration, support, and/or any negative perspectives they have about the work being done in their district.
But Jared would actually concur with that. Mr. Kinnear?
I appreciate Mr. Kemp. And Mr. Kemp's done a great job on the Community Development Board petition now, so we put him back in. Could we perhaps maybe just modify the minutes to say, to show that Mr. Kemp is happy with the direction of district, of the district that he lives in, and maybe we could just stop at a chat and get him out of the equation? That way we don't open anything up.
Give him the rest of his time?
I mean, we get the negatives. I mean, just like, we get the negatives, I guess maybe the positives also should be kept aside. But I do appreciate what he's saying, and we do have a good district. And it's because of people like him who have stepped up in many ways on many projects. And I'm proud of what we've done. But we'll just keep that and take, take the clean out of the equation if we could.
Thank you, Mr. Kinnear. Mr. Riley, you were asked legal interpretation.
It's like many matters in legal interpretation, there are nuances and not something that I can just provide an answer. We can look into those things, but hearing the remarks that are made, it is commonplace to hear various folks make criticism in here and come in and do that. I'll be happy to look into the matter over the next, for now, the next meeting and try to give a little bit of a guidance here in regard to it in relation both to the rules of the council, but also just looking at things from a constitutional perspective.
Thank you very much. That's kinda where I, I'm concerned about is I don't want to infringe on people's right to speak.
Then stop.
Prefer, as far as I'm concerned, you can praise a person's name to praise them all you want to, but if you've got something negative to say, let's stick with titles. But, but, the floor is yours. I don't think you have, you know, done anything inappropriate. And you've got a minute and twenty-six seconds left.
Well, that's, that's probably why I love Bill Kling so much, because it's not like to know we're politicians, you know? I can't understand why councilwoman Akridge would even ask that question. After many times I've been in here, Ms. Reed just went on a whole rant about things, and she's done it several times. And I, you know, you can check the record to see if she's even asked for that. I come in peace to give people praise on that city council for the hard work you've done. Not just my city council, man, but Devin, you've done an amazing job over there in the public library. I take my son, which you just got to take a picture with, over there and play. I love the activities, love the festivities. John, I love that we have a communication when we communicate. Every time everybody, I was gonna come, I was gonna attempt to congratulate you for how beautiful this city looks. Some may disagree about the development, but I am very excited because there's so much opportunity, so much business. As Devin can say, when we grew up here, we called it Hunts Vegas. As I look around here, I'm like, wow, it looks like it. And, you know, I have to get my hat off to even we have disagreed about things. You have done an amazing job throughout your time as mayor. I don't think no one can disagree with that. You know, the difference is, because, you know, as a human, people just not gonna like everything about you. You understand what I mean? That's what every person, everything. But I can commend you for the good job you've done. And, you know, I come in here in peace, but that's very disturbing that council act that you would even stop me to do that.
Right.
Very disturbing. So as I continue in peace, you know, you guys have a great.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kemp. Would you? Okay.
Add a little bit more to that situation from our rules, just a little bit here.
It's all about just our bylaws and not to know.
Our rules that say speakers use this time to offer opinions, concerns, or ideas about city matters. Council members will listen to that, engage in dialogue, et cetera. Speakers shall refrain from making comments regarding the good name and character of individuals. Speaking about the good name and character is, is different than speaking and commenting on what's, what's really a good job or not or if someone is taking the position.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to note, because it is part of my role as a city council member to make sure we're using our bylaws appropriately. I appreciate it.
May I say? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Riley, and thank you, Ms. Edgert. Our next speaker is Ms. Sarah Coletti. I think we're gonna go back to the beginning or I got this to Ken.
My name is Sarah Coletti. My address is listed correctly on the sheet. Last time we spoke, y'all engaged me in some dialogue, and I'm afraid it seems we have a misunderstanding. I know y'all can't wave a magic wand and expand access to the airport. But thanks to Bill Kling, I know you can suggest using federal funds to help bus drivers. I didn't need the council president to tell me Huntsville taxpayers can have Madison addresses. However, the fact that Huntsville residents have Madison addresses was my point. When I was younger, I dated a guy who lived on Balt Road and also attended Butler. There was no way I knew of to visit him that didn't require driving through Madison, but usually I passed by the location that is now Planet Fitness to get there. In my time spent advocating for justice for Huntsville taxpayer Dana Fletcher before this council, I've learned the following. Huntsville city is constantly expanding into Madison City and Limestone County. There are no accurate printed maps of Huntsville available for sale because of this. And crossing the border into Madison could be deadly for Huntsville taxpayers, and this council would do nothing to advocate for us if this happened. Because according to our president with the Madison address, whatever happens there is irrelevant. If I were killed in Madison tomorrow, I would be irrelevant. I recognize it's not the job of this council to train MPD officers or to give orders to Madison City or police leadership, and I'm not asking for that. Considering all the Huntsville and Madison taxpayers killed by HPD, this city wouldn't have a leg to stand on anyway. What I'm asking is that this city work harder to accomplish transparency. In June twenty-twenty, the city teargassed and shot Huntsville citizens for protesting peacefully at Big Spring Park. Everyone arrested during that protest had charges dropped against them, but this city claims there were no incidents of police violence in twenty-twenty. We're the largest city in Alabama. If we want Madison to do better, we need to set a better example ourselves. We need justice for more than just Jeffrey Parker. We need justice for Crystal Ragland, Brad Pugh, Christina Nance, Alberto Rivas, Robert Young, Horatio Rice, William Freddie Carter Jr., Randy Joe Sanders, Taryn Burt, Deandre Woods, Nikki Listow, Latorene Taylor, Monterius Morris, Tanisha Jefferson, and Christopher Bishop. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Chad Chavez.
Hi, my name is Chad Chavez of seven-five-one-two, Club Field Drive. First off, I want to put your mind at ease. I'm gonna try my best not to say anything too nice to anyone. I'm here to ask in person about the continued reporting failures coming out of Huntsville Police Department. Just to give a little background, CCJR has been asking for accurate reporting from HPD for the past two years. We were routinely told that the answers we needed were in annual reports released by the Huntsville Police Department. We were also told that if we wanted to follow up on those statistics, we should attend HPCAC meetings to learn more. So imagine my surprise when I went to the HPCAC meeting on Internal Affairs, and I was told by the former head of Internal Affairs that any use of force complaint related to the NAACP protests had been omitted from the twenty-twenty annual report at the sole discretion of HPD leadership. Instead of including those use of force complaints and their outcomes, HPD leadership chose to suppress those statistics and report zero use of force cases that were sustained against police officers. At the time of asking, they had no plans to amend that report. They had no plans to release the full report in their next annual report. And I was told that that would also be left to HPD leadership. We also learned that despite claiming police officers couldn't participate in HPCAC review council authorized for legal reasons, that was also a decision made solely by leadership. Internal Affairs had a pretty different interpretation of guarantee than what was presented to the council. Additionally, CCJR identified underreporting of hate crimes to the FBI's crime tracker by Huntsville Police Department. In a year that saw multiple instances of antisemitic graffiti on Huntsville synagogues and anti-black graffiti on our overpasses, HPD reported zero cases. I contacted you all about this in email, and the response has been lacking. Councilmember Akridge accused me of looking backwards instead of forwards. But in a city that takes sixteen months to report their crime statistics, what choice do I have? And what's the point of looking forward if HP is just allowed to emit statistics at their own choosing? Councilmember Keith talked today about building relationships between police and the community, but I have to wonder, can you really have a relationship without trust? Council has no problem paying for policing software with powerful reporting options, but it's clear that the current culture is not interested in transparency. It falls to council then, whether it's by giving the HPCAC more direct authority or attaching the reporting department to spending or hauling leadership here for reporting sessions. Whatever it takes, it's clearly gonna fall to you guys, because the current culture there is not supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Councilmembers, I wanted to just address a couple pieces. One on the IA reporting. I'm gonna reach out to Mr. Chavez and get a better understanding of the specific statistics that he's talking about there. I'm not, it's not clear to me exactly what he's talking about. We will look at that and get back on that. But the other piece on the hate crime reporting, his, his description is clearly, I think there's a lot of people in the public that have a misunderstanding of what that means. In Alabama, there is no such thing as a hate crime. There is no law, in Alabama law, where you can be charged with a hate crime by a Huntsville Police Department. There's no such thing. So the graffiti incident he talks about, that crime that was committed there under Alabama law is vandalism. There's, you would not be charged with a hate crime. But that's only part of the story. If you go into the police reports on a crime that's committed, if there is sufficient evidence that leads a police officer who's conducting investigation and completing a report to believe that the crime may have been hate motivated, whether it was a hate bias that is noted in the report. And in fact, the instance he's talking about, at least some of those, in fact, if you go pull those police reports, it's noted in there that it was potentially hate motivated. And I say it that way because under Alabama law, what happens is through the investigative process, they actually, if they are able to arrest a suspect and the DA charges them and proceeds into prosecution, the DA can choose with sufficient evidence to seek a sentencing enhancement post-conviction because of a hate bias. But there is no such thing as a hate crime. In fact, you know, it highlights that those reports are loaded in there. But some of the absence of those appearing in FBI databases, because the way the state pulls our reports, they would pull a report and say there was vandalism that occurred. It will not say there was a hate crime that occurred. That just, that's just not how the report actually works. But we do in fact have, you know, if you go back, I've checked the police, if you go back on the last three years of crimes where the investigating officer believed there might have been a hate bias and in fact were a number where that was noted in the investigative process. But again, that will only play out if arrest occurs, a conviction occurs, and the DA chooses to pursue that if there's enough evidence to seek a sentencing enhancement. So there's not gonna be ever a report that says there was a hate crime. There are reports that say there were crimes potentially motivated by hate. And that sounds like a technical difference, but in terms of reporting, what goes with the FBI database is a very important difference.
Yes, Mr. Keith.
Well, thank you for the explanation. On a two-fold point, and we'll probably get to it next month. Our crime statistical data reporting is internalized, and I might be off on this. It's internalized and reviewed in, in year-end, or is it a quarterly review? Or is that a statistic ever growing? I guess I'm asking. When you ask for something, is that pulled from that day? Do we have the ability to do that?
Well, we can go into our databases and see what's in there. But the report that Mr. Chavez is referring to is what ends up in the FBI's annual report, the police report he's referring to. And so the state actually reaches in and pulls that information. We don't control what they, what they pull out. And really, what, what's getting pulled out is the top-level crime. And so, you know, the example that he gave, you know, the crime that would have been pulled if they, they were seeking that type of criminal statistic was vandalism, not a hate crime. Does that make sense?
No, no, it doesn't. I think, you know, it does. It just makes sense. Chad, if you can, please make the four-twenty event, and we will discuss the perspective of, we've talked about data, because it goes back to the crime mapping, but that's just a whole other subject. So hopefully you can make it four-twenty, Chad, and we can discuss.
Do you mean four-twelve, the HPCAC is talking about data?
That meeting as well, but the other one I was gonna talk to, it's just a whole other matter we'll discuss on four-twenty about data entry on specific crimes that are mapped, shown, and shared publicly, which is the perspective he made about accessibility.
So our, you know, our, you know, the, the various police reports, you know, incident reports and investigative processes are being loaded continuously. I mean, it's happening twenty-four-seven. But in terms of the statistics getting pulled by the state, I think it's an annual report, just to be clear.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. His argument is that our accessibility should be higher of, like you said, bringing individuals down to make public accountability reports. And I'm saying that's a, it's easier said than done. It creates a cognitive dissonance as a politician of what the projection would be. In a lot of ways, people hear thirty-two homicides in twenty-twenty-two for Huntsville. That's a lot, actually. But comparable to a city that's sixty miles away from here, that would be the best year they could have in the past ten years.
I hope you're not predicting that, because that would be a really high number for us.
No, that's what, I'm just saying, that, you know, given that number, it needs to be given context. It's just hard to say that, and I think his argument is valid, that you wanna pull data that you, that you. but the second you make that stuff readily available, there is a city right now challenged with the social connotation that comes from the plague, actually. Thank you, Ms. Akerich.
Since we've gone this far on a deep dive on, uh, statistics, I need to know more about what a use of force complaint is, because the assertion is that because we had a review of the incidents of June twenty twenty, that why, I think, I understand, why aren't there some complaints listed in twenty twenty? However, I don't know that anything was ever found to be outside of, I think, I forget the section. I used to know it by heart, that enumerated use of improper, improper use of force. We had a way of, that we investigated to, uh,
If rubber bullets are used properly, they shouldn't break the skin.
But as far as I know, there were no official complaints of use of force that were investigated? When, just before Chief Murray left, he said to me, there were no official complaints listed in Iowa.
Those are reliable sources.
For use of force.
That's correct. Zero citizens.
Made a complaint.
Boo, lie.
So that would be why you don't have twenty twenty use of force.
Well, for those, yeah, when I say.
For that incident.
For the specific example you're talking about, for that, for that incident, there were zero complaints filed, yes.
And by the way, for the record, it was found that no Huntsville Police Department did not use the rubber bullets, that they don't have them in there. There was one rubber bullet that was missing from a, uh, armory. However, nobody used those to disperse the crowd. It was not HPD. Clearly, it had to be the Sheriff's Department.
Lie.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hamilton. Since we are clarifying things, I want to, uh, and she was here when it happened, but Ms. Coletti, I never said that Dana Fletcher's death in the city of Madison was irrelevant. I said that it was not our jurisdiction. Thank you. Um, is there a motion to adjourn? So, we'll give it to Mr. Keith this time.